It was so much easier to move. We didn't have all this technology. Okay. We will try this again. We're calling to order the Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. We have a number of governor's messages on our agenda this morning. All of them well qualified. Our first governor's message is 624, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Private Detectives and Guards. gubernatorial nominee Paul Ferrera for a term to expire 630, 2026. And it's actually Chief Ferrera because he's the police chief for Hawaii Department. Let's see, we have joining us on Zoom is Chelsea Fukunaga.
Hello Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee. Chelsea Fukunaga, Executive Officer for the Board of Private Detectives and Guards. The board will stand on its written testimony in support of Police Chief Paul Ferrera's confirmation. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have testimony and support from Gary Yamuta. And Todd Reibach. Do we have anybody else wishing to offer comments on Governor's Message 624? I don't believe the chief is with us this morning. But I had an opportunity to speak with everyone and it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent to his nomination. The next governor's message is to the Board of Dentistry. This is for Dr. Seifi Fujimoto for a term to expire 630, 2025. Dr. Fujimoto is a reappointment, lives in Milley, Lani. We have in support on Zoom from the Board representing the Board of Dentistry, Sandy Matsushima.
Good morning Chair Baker. This is Candace Ito and I'm sorry but Sandy Matsushima couldn't make it this morning. So the Board of Dentistry stands in support of Staff Fujimoto's reappointment.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you subbing in for Sandy. We also have testimony and support from Dr. Norman Chan and Melissa Pavlicek. Is there anyone else wishing to offer comment on Governor's Message 630? Dr. Fujimoto was a dentist. I don't believe Dr. Fujimoto is joining us this morning. Hopefully he's helping somebody save their teeth. The next governor's message is 631, also to the Board of Dentistry. This is for Joy Shimabuku, who is a public member of the Board. As you all will remember, we have licensees and public members on all of our boards and commissions. Let's see. We have testimony from the Board of Dentistry.
Good morning Chair Baker. This is Candace Ito and the Board of Dentistry supports the appointment of Ms. Shimabuku. Ms. Shimabuku, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much Candace. We have Barry Kaplan in support and David Premiano in support. Anybody else here wishing to offer comment on this reappointment as a public member to the Board of Dentistry? I don't believe Joy is on the call with us this morning. But having spoken with her, it will be my recommendation and pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent. Our next governor's message is 655. This is to the Professional Engineers Architects Surveys and Landscape Architects Board affectionately called ISLA. Our nominee is Brian Fujiwara, who is an architect. I believe that we have somebody from DCCA on the call this morning in support.
Yes, good morning Chair Baker. This is Candace Ito. ISLA supports the confirmation of Mr. Fujiwara's reappointment.
Okay. So Candace, are you going to be representing DCCA on all of these boards?
Just Ms. Matsushima because she is unavailable today.
Okay, alright. We also have testimony from Tim Lee in support of Mr. Fujiwara's renomination. And also Robert Umol in support. Anybody here, anybody else here wishing to offer comments on Governor's Message 655 to the ISLA Board? If not, it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent. Our next governor's message is GM 656, submitting for consideration confirmation to the Elevator Mechanics Licensing Board. gubernatorial nominee Mark Baker, no relation to the Chair, for a term to expire 630, 2026. I believe our nominee is on Zoom. Is that you Mark? Perhaps he cannot hear me. We have also on Zoom representing the Elevator Mechanics Licensing Board, Kaden Kleinhans.
Morning Chair Baker, Vice Chair Chang members. Kaden Kleinhans testifying on behalf of the Board. We send our testimony in support of the nominees' reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we also have testimony and support from Robert Summers. Anybody else on this call wishing to offer comment on Governor's Message 656? If not, members, individuals well qualified, it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent. Our next governor's message is 657, submitting for consideration confirmation to the Pest Control Board. gubernatorial nominee Karen Monago for a term to expire 630, 2025. Let's see. We have representative from the Pest Control Board on the call.
Hi, good morning Chair Baker, members of the committee. Leona Green, Executive Officer of the Pest Control Board. The board stands on its written testimony in support of Mr. Monago's appointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have testimony from Tim Lyons in support. Anybody else here on Zoom or in the audience that wants to offer comment on Governor's Message 657? If not, members, it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent. I will note for the record that we have gotten lots of very excellent nominations from the governor this year on these various boards. Our next governor's message is 658 to the Board of Public Accountancy. gubernatorial nominee Christopher Lee for a term to expire 630, 2026. Mr. Lee is currently a board member licensee and this is a reappointment. We have Kaden Kleinhans from the State Board of Public Accountancy.
Morning again Chair Baker, Vice Chair Chang and members. We send our testimony in support of the nominees' reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Casey Yoshimura in support. I don't believe Mr. Lee is with us this morning, but members, it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent. Our next governor's message is Governor's Message 706. This is to the ISLA Board Public Member Jay Ishibashi for a term to expire 630, 2026. And ISLA is the Board of Professional Engineers Architects Surveys and Landscape Architects. Mr. Ishibashi is a public member. This is a reappointment and I believe Jay is here. Good morning. You want to just pull that mic over so we can hear you in the audience on Zoom and hear you as well? Thanks Jay.
Sitting here, I just realized that I've actually been on a Board of Commission for each decade since Governor Kay Tano first appointed me to this board back in the 90s. So I am happy to serve, happy for the nomination and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your being such a reliable board member. Thanks Jay. We also have some testimony from the ISLA Board Executive Officer.
Morning Chair Baker. This is Candace Ito, Executive Officer. And ISLA stands in support of the confirmation of Mr. Ishibashi's reappointment to the Board.
Thank you. We also have Kendall Hee and Ken Hayashi offering support. Anybody else here wanting to offer comment on Governor's Message 706? Members, any questions for Mr. Ishibashi? Ishi Bayashi, sorry about that. Okay, let's move forward to the next governor's message. This one is Governor's Message 707 to the Board of Veterinary Medicine. Lisa Wood, Dr. Lisa Wood, who is a licensee. She lives in A Welo and has 32 years of veterinary experience. We have testimony and support from DCCA. Good morning.
Good morning Chair Baker. Members of the committee, Kat Awokuni Cologne on behalf of DCCA. DCCA stands on its written testimony in strong support of Dr. Wood to the Veterinary Board as a licensee member. I did also want to thank you Chair and this committee for hearing all of these governors' messages for these important boards. I know you personally go through a lot of effort to vet all of the different candidates. So thank you again for all of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you Director. We have testimony from Herbert Tim Richards in support, from Nicole Galase in support, from Alan Gottlieb in support and Jason Moniz in support.
Hi Chair Baker.
Yes.
Sorry, can I testify via Zoom?
Of course.
Thank you so much. I'm Nicole Galase on behalf of the Hawaii Council. We stand on our testimony in strong support of Dr. Wood. She is competent and experienced and she will be an asset to the Board as an avid facilitator. She's a compassionate leader and a thoughtful decision maker. Mahalo.
Thank you Nicole. Anybody else wishing to offer comments on Governor's Message 707? I don't believe that Dr. Wood is here, but it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent. Our next governor's message is 736, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the State Board of Nursing. gubernatorial nominee Diana Riggs for a term to expire 630, 2026. She happens to be a Maui resident. She lives in Waileku. She is a registered nurse, has 16 years of experience in the nursing field and is certified in basic life support as well. She's been a part of the Hawaii Ambulatory Nursing Council, Regional Nurse Leadership Committee, Emergency Management Committee, Infection Control Committee and Attendance Committee. We have testimony and support from DCCA. Director Cologne.
Good morning again Chair Baker, members of the committee, Kat Awokuni Cologne. We again stand on our written testimony in support of Ms. Riggs in this particular instance to the State Board of Nursing as a licensee member. And we thank Ms. Riggs for her willingness to participate in this way. Thank you.
Thank you. We have testimony and support from William Boyer, from Dr. Chris Martin, from Andrew Giles, Donovan Cheng, I see him in the room.
Morning Chair, we'll stand on our written testimony and support it. You know, just note that Ms. Riggs has in her career has not only just served that, you know, patients that size, but she's seen the full continuum of care as a nursing, as a nurse. You know, I think her ability to participate and serve with the Order of Nursing will be really valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have testimony and support from Chris Martin. Is Diana on the call with us this morning?
Hi Senator Baker, I'm here.
Very good. Would you like to share anything with the committee?
Oh, just that I'm honored to be nominated and I'm happy to serve and appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all of the expertise and knowledge that you bring to this board and it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent to your nomination. Thanks so much for your willingness to serve. Members, our next governor's message is 755 to the Board of Naturopathic Medicine. This is for Joy Kimora, who is a public member and a reappointment. I believe we have Christopher Fernandez from the Board of Naturopathic Medicine on the Zoom call with us. If not, his testimony was in support. Melissa Asato, Dori Pavlovich and Patrick McLean, I'm sorry, all in support. Is Joy on the Zoom call with us? I don't think she was able to join us. As you all know, these hearings are on Chair's time and not on our nominees' time. And we all have such busy members that often they cannot join us. But it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent to Governor's Message 755. Our next governor's message is 762. This is to the Hawaii Medical Board. And let's see, there we go. gubernatorial nominee Rebecca Sawai for a term to expire 630, 2026. She is a new appointment. She's a licensee member and lives here in Honolulu and has 28 years of working experience in the medical field. She's been a Hawaii health hero designated by the Healthcare Association of Hawaii and was listed in the Best Doctors of America in Honolulu, Hawaii for a number of years. So before I call our nominee, we have testimony and support from DCCA.
Thank you again Chair, Kat Awokuni Cologne on behalf of DCCA. We stand on our written testimony in support of Dr. Sawai as the licensee member. And we thank Dr. Sawai for her willingness to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Julianne Chan also in support. Lynn Am Greco in support. Mark Yamamura and Mr. Cheng.
Again, I'm Chair, thank you. I'd like to stand on a strong testimony in support of Dr. Sawai's appointment.
Okay, thank you. And I see Dr. Sawai on Zoom joining us. Welcome. Do you have anything you'd like to share with the committee?
Yes, good morning and thanks for this opportunity. I'm really honored to be nominated to serve and would really look forward to being able to do so. Thanks.
Thank you Doctor. We appreciate your willingness to serve. These boards would not function and we wouldn't get new folks licensed if we didn't have good people willing to donate their time to do this. So it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent to your nomination. Our next governor's message is 763. This is to the Board of Acupuncture. Robert Leroux for a term to expire 630, 2024. He's a public member, a new appointment, lives in Honolulu. Director Cologne.
Thank you again. We stand on our written testimony in support of Dr. Leroux and we look forward to working with him. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We also have testimony and support from Gregory Morris, from Tim Freeman and Joni Kroll is our nominee with us this morning. If not, members, it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent to Governor's Message 763. Our next board is the Cable Advisory Committee. This is Governor's Message 766. Nominee Scott Wong for a term to expire 630, 2024. To the Cable Advisor Committee, he is a reappointment, an at-large member who lives on Oahu, actually in Waimea. And as I said, this is a reappointment. So on Zoom in support, we have Lisa Kim from DCCA.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. We stand on our written testimony in strong support of Mr. Wong for this position. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have letters of support from Nate Gore, from Scotty Rice Moniz, from Jack James. Is Mr. Wong in our audience or on Zoom? If not, members, it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent to this governor's message. Our next governor's message is 767, the Real Estate Commission. This is for Russell Piono for a term to expire 630, 2026. Mr. Piono is from Kauai Island. He's a, this is a reappointment. He's a broker member. He lives in Hawaii and has been involved in real estate, looks to me like since 1981. So well schooled in this endeavor. We have testimony and support from the Real Estate Commission, Miles Eno. Miles, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Did you want to offer testimony in support of Governor's Message 767?
Yes, I do. Good morning Chair Baker and members of the committee. Miles Eno for the Realty Commission. We stand in support of our written testimony and it's, I'm sorry, we stand on our written testimony in support of Russell Piono to the Realty Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you Miles. We also have testimony and support from Karen Ono from Kalahao. Anybody else here wishing to offer comments on Governor's Message 767? I don't believe that our nominee was able to join us via Zoom. But members, it will be my pleasure to recommend that the committee advise and consent. Our next governor's message is 768. This is also to the Real Estate Commission nominee John Love for a term to expire 630, 2026. He is a public member. This is a reappointment. Is partner with Cades and Shetty, lives here in Honolulu. And he is currently on the Board and this is a reappointment as our public member on this Board. We have testimony and support from Miles Eno. Real Estate Commission.
Good morning Chair Baker and members of the committee. Miles Eno with the Realty Commission. We stand on our written testimony in support of John Love to the Realty Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you Miles. We have also testimony and support from Grace Kido, from Nathan Okubo and Lisa Ayave. Anybody else on the call that wants to weigh in on this? Is Mr. Love able to join us this morning on Zoom? I don't see him. Members, having reviewed his qualifications, he's definitely well qualified and we may, my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent to Governor's Message 768. Our next governor's message is 769. This is a confirmation to the State Board of Public Accountancy. gubernatorial nominee Gary Miyashiro for a term to expire 630, 2026. He is a licensed member and this is a reappointment. He's from Honolulu. He's been a CPA since 1994 and continues in that business. Let's see, I believe we have Kaden Kleinhans on the call in support.
Morning again Chair Baker, Vice Chair Chang members. Kaden Kleinhans testifying on behalf of the Board. We send our testimony in support of the nominees' reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have testimony and support from Sanford Morioka and Gregory Ru. Is Mr. Miyashiro on Zoom or in the audience? I don't believe so. However, members, he is well qualified and it's my, it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent. Our next governor's message is 791. This is to the ISLA Board Professional Engineers Architects Surveys and Landscape Architects. gubernatorial nominee Benedict Lee for a term to expire 630, 2026. He is a reappointment. He's a licensee member. He's a landscape architect and lives in Honolulu. Let's see. We have a representative from this board. Sandra.
Good morning Chair Baker and members of the committee. This is Candace Ito on behalf of the Board of Professional Engineers Architects Surveys and Landscape Architects Board. The Board stands in, on its written testimony in support of Mr. Lee's reappointment to the Board.
Thank you Candace. We also have testimony and support from Michelle Nagafuchi and Pamela Rogencamp. Anybody else here wishing to offer comment on Governor's Message 791? Members, it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent. Our next governor's message is 297, I'm sorry, 792, Speech Pathology and Auditory, Audiology Board, sorry. Governor's nominee Denby Rawl for a term to expire 630, 2026. She is a reappointment, lives in Kanaoe and works at Tripler Army Medical Center. Let's see, we have on Zoom representative from the Board of Speech Pathology and Audiology. Christopher, are you there? The Board supports this nominee. We also have letters of support from Kristen Kumabe, Corey Nishida, Rai Chan, Susan May and Sean Kagiki. So is Denby on the call with us? If not, members, she is well qualified and it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent. Our next governor's message is 800. This is for, this is to the Board of Physical Therapy gubernatorial nominee Michelle Chi for a term to expire 630, 2023. She is a new appointment. She is a physical therapist, lives here in Honolulu and is the President, President Director of Rehab Services at Shriners Children's. We have Director Awokuni Cologne in support.
Yes, thank you very much again Chair, members of the committee. The department stands on its written testimony in support of Dr. Chi to the Board of Physical Therapy as a licensee member and we look forward to welcoming her. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have testimony and support from Cynthia Tamayo and from Anita Becker in support. Michelle, were you able to join us this morning?
I am, good morning Chair Baker and members of the committee. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Would you like to share anything with the committee?
No, I'm just thankful for this opportunity to serve.
Okay, thank you so much. It will be my pleasure to recommend to my colleagues that we advise and consent. And thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Our next governor's message is 812, the Board of Electricians and Plumbers. This is Nathan Olanda for a term to expire 630, 2026. He is a licensee member to the Board of Electricians and Plumbers. He is an electrician, lives in Honolulu and is presently with the city and county of Honolulu as an electrical inspector. He has 40 years of experience. Director Awokuni Cologne.
Good morning again Chair, members of the committee. The department stands on its written testimony in support of Mr. Olanda to the Board and look forward to welcoming him as a licensee member. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have testimony and support from Gerald Yu, from Gary Omori and Jeffrey Olanda. So let's see, is Nathan on the call with us? If not, members, it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent to Governor's Message 812. Mr. Nathan Olanda as a licensed electrician to the Boards of Electricians and Plumbers. Our next governor's message is 813, Motor Vehicle Licensing Board. This is for the confirmation of gubernatorial nominee John Codell Jr. for a term to expire 630, 2023. He is a new appointment as a licensee member. He lives in Kailua Kona and is a dealer and owner of a business there. He's been a board member of Legacy of Life Hawaii for a while, seven years and has 40 years experience in the automotive industry and 25 years as an owner of a dealership. So I would say he's well qualified to serve on this board. Director Awokuni Cologne.
Thank you again Chair, good morning. Thank you again Chair. Good morning. The department stands on its written testimony in support of Mr. Cordell to the Motor Vehicle Industry Licensing Board as a licensee member and similarly, look forward to welcoming him as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have testimony and support from James Santa Stephen, from Jacob Worker, from Henry Mullinox, from Joe McCloskey and Robert Goldman. Is our licensee on the call with us this morning? I don't believe so. But members, he is well qualified. As you heard from his list of experience and it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent. Governor's Message eight fourteen is next. This is to the Barbering and Cosmetology Licensing Board and this is for Michael Basta Jr. For a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty five. He is a new appointment, a licensee member and lives in Kapalei. Let's see, Director Akuni Cologne.
Good morning again Chair, thank you. The department stands on its written testimony in support of Mr. Basta and similarly, we're looking forward to having him as a licensee member. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have testimony and support from Kat Miletta and Mindy Del Monaco. Anybody else wishing to offer comment on Governor's Message eight fourteen? Is Mr. Basta joining us? I don't believe so. Members, it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent. Our next Governor's Message is eight thirty four. This is an appointment to the Real Estate Commission, the Hawaii Island Rep. And it is a reappointment of Sean Ginoza for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. He is representing a broker, an appointment as a broker member of the board. He resides in Hilo. And as you can see from the items listed, he's been very involved in real estate for many years. And is currently a licensed Hawaii Realtor. Let's see, do we have testimony from Miles Eno?
Good morning Chair Baker, members of the committee. Miles, you know, with the Realty Commission. We stand on our written testimony in support of reappointment of Sean Ginoza to the Realty Commission. And thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you. I don't believe Mr. Ginoza is joining us by Zoom, but members, he is well qualified and it will be my pleasure to recommend that we advise and consent. Our next Governor's Message is also to the Real Estate Commission. This is a licensee from Oahu. Mr. Richard Emery for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. This is a new appointment. Mr. Emery lives here in Honolulu. He's a forty five year Hawaii resident. And is a licensee member. And we've seen him come before the committee on various occasions to represent various various points of view on, on a number of our bills that have come before the committee. We have a testimony from the Director of DCCA.
Good morning again Chair. The, the department stands on its written testimony in support of Mr. Emery to the Real Estate Commission as a licensee member. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Okay, we have testimony and opposition from Lila Mauer. We have testimony and support from Naalum, from Phil Nerny. Phil, are you on the Zoom this morning? I don't see him. Mike Galloio Senior, all of these are in support. Steve Glennstein, James Sukimura. We have a couple of folks that are in opposition. Kate Payne, Marsha Kimura, Dale Head. Testimony and support from Charles Reinbacher, Lyle Sodda, Dave Levy, Christian Porter, Peter Wargo, Tim Acicella, Laurie McGuire. Testimony and opposition from Greg Nikasan, Jeff Sedino and Steven Wydenhold. Anybody that I missed that wants to offer comments on this Governor's Message?
I would like to offer comments please.
And please identify yourself.
My name is Jeff Sedino.
Okay, please proceed.
Good morning Chair Baker, Vice Chair Chang and members of the committee. I oppose Mr. Emery's appointment to the Real Estate Commission. Reading his testimonies over the years, he is firmly pro industry and I believe anti condominium owner. His resume shows that he is currently the co-chair of CAI, the Director of HCCA and employed by Associa, one of the largest managing agents in the state. If his appointment is approved, I worry that industry will have an unfair back channel, line of communication and influence over the exact commission that is supposed to be policing them. Separately, I have been disappointed by his resistance to acknowledge the many problems that the five hundred thousand residents encounter in condominium living. More often than not, he dismisses complaints from owners as illegitimate. On his most recent condo insider podcast, he spent twenty seven minutes discrediting owners and describing their complaints as fake news and a bunch of BS. I know firsthand that working with the condo industry has been the most unreasonable and mind numbing experience of my life. I find Mr. Emery's recent comments completely inappropriate of a public servant. Finally, I can understand the motivation for having an industry representative on the Real Estate Commission. Unfortunately, Mr. Emery has used his experience to the benefit of the industry, not the individuals. I think that Mr. Emery is not the right representative that the public deserves and I oppose his appointment. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on the call wanting to offer comments on this?
Oh yes.
Yes, please.
Good morning to you. Committee, thank you. I use the word team. Yeah, I oppose this nomination.
Well, you need to identify yourself, please.
My name is Dale Head. Thank you. I'm talking to you from Oahu Valley this morning. I was at a condominium for three, over three and a half diggies. And endless intrigues of these property management companies keep controlling boards by manipulating their elections. Anyway, most recently, we had a voting rights bill which he testified against. He prefers the people who cannot attend in person make out a proxy form, but the form was amended to favor the incumbents. It's really unfair. I'd like to point out for historical perspective, in nineteen ninety six, the Real Estate Commission opposed amending that proxy form. Let me quote. "We question if the amendment will provide for more abuse on the use of proxies and whether a new set of problems will appear, such as a new type of proxies and are more challenges to proxies," unquote. "We need a consumer protection person on that board, which we do not have right now. We need someone who favors voting rights." Okay, we don't get that. I've done audits of proxies and found that the property managers wrongfully funnel undecided owners' proxies to candidates who have less support from owners.
That's not really what's on the table right now, but thank you very much for your
Thank you.
comments. Anybody else on this call wishing to offer comments on Governor's Message eight thirty five? If not, members, let's go forward to Governor's Message eight thirty six. This is Contractors Licensing Board General Engineering Contractor Physician from Honolulu and this is a reappointment for John Polisic Jr. And we have testimony on Zoom from the Contractors Licensing Board, Ms. Ito.
Good morning Chair Baker and members of the committee. This is Candace Ito, Executive Officer of the Contractors License Board. And the board stands in support of Mr. Polisic's appointment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. We have testimony and opposition from Gerald Silva, in support from Mark Duda and Marshall Mizobe. Members, any question for Ms. Ito? Members, this brings us to the end of our agenda. I'm going to suggest that we take a brief recess and then come together for decision making. Thank you. Reconvene the Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection for purposes of decision making on the Board and Commission members to make it. The recommendation is going to be to advise and consent on all of them. But we will take them one at a time, so it's easier for members to do the vote sheets. So the first Governor's Message is six twenty four. This is Paul Ferreira, Police Chief to be, from Hawaii Island to be on the private detectives and guards. The recommendation is to advise and consent. Any questions or concerns? This is Governor's Message six twenty four. Just got six twenty four. Okay, you want to call the vote please?
Members voting on GM six two four advising consent. Chair goes, I. Senator Chang. Senator Decoy goes, I. Senator Nishaw.
I.
Senator Rivera.
I.
Senator Sandby. Senator Favella, excuse Chair, your motion is adopted.
Okay, you might want to use her whole name next time. So, okay, thank you members. Next message, Governor's Message is six thirty. This is for Doctors Fujimoto to serve on the Board of Dentistry. And the recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Members voting on GM six three zero. Chair's recommendation is to advise and consent, recognizing all members here with the excuse of Senator Favella. Any reservations or needs? Seeing non-chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. On Governor's Message six thirty one, also to the Board of Dentistry, Joy Shumabuku for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty five. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Members voting on GM six three one, Chair's recommendation is to advise and consent, recognizing all members here with the excuse of Senator Favella. Any reservations or needs? Seeing non-chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thanks members. The next Governor's Message is six fifty five. To the East La Board, Brian Pujiwara for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Members voting on GM six five five, Chair's recommendation, advising consent, recognizing all members here with the excuse of Senator Favella. Any reservations or needs? Seeing none, Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you members. Next Governor's Message is six fifty six. This is to the Elevator Mechanics Licensing Board, Mark Baker for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. The Chair recommends we advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Okay, members voting on GM six five six, Chair's recommendation, advising consent, noting the excused absence of Senator Favella. Are any of the members present voting with reservations or in opposition seeing none, your recommendation adopted Chair.
Thank you. Next Governor's Message is six fifty seven. This is to the Pest Control Board gubernatorial nominee Terrence Minago for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty five. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
With six members present and one excused, are any members voting with reservations or in opposition seeing none, your recommendation adopted Chair.
Thank you. The next Governor's Message is six fifty eight. This is to the Board of Public Accountancy gubernatorial nominee Christopher Lee, term expires six thirty twenty twenty six. Recommendation is to advising consent. Chair votes aye.
Thank you Chair. Any members present voting with reservations or in opposition noting excuse absence for Senator Favella? All in favor, adopted Chair.
Thank you. Next is seven oh six to the East La Board, Jay Ishibashi for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. Chair votes, Chair recommends advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
I'm sorry, Chair, was it seven oh six?
Seven oh six.
Chair's recommendation advising consent. Six members present, one excused, any voting in opposition or reservations, recommendation adopted Chair.
Thank you. The next Governor's Message is seven oh seven. This is to the Board of Veterinary Medicine, Lisa Wood. Dr. Lisa Wood, Chair recommends that we advise and consent and Chair votes aye.
The members present with exclusion of Senator Favella. Any members voting with opposition or with reservation? Seeing none, motion for doctors.
Thank you members. The next is Governor's Message seven thirty six to the Board of Nursing. Nurse member Diana Riggs, Chair recommends advising consent. Chair votes aye.
Okay, the members present, any with the exclusion of Senator Favella. Any voting with reservations or opposition seeing none, motions adopted.
Thank you. Next Governor's Message is seven fifty five. This is to the Board of Naturopathic Medicine. Gubernatorial nominee Joy Kimura for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. Chair recommends we advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
The members present with the exception of Senator Favella, any voting with reservations or in opposition seeing none, motions adopted.
Thank you. The next Governor's Message is GM seven sixty two. This is for the Medical Board, Dr. Rebecca Saway for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Okay, with the exception with the exception of Senator Favella, excuse all members present, any voting with reservations or opposition seeing none, motions adopted.
The next Governor's Message is seven sixty three for the Board of Acupuncture gubernatorial nominee Robert LaRue for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty four. Chair recommends we advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Yeah, the members present with the exception of Senator Favella, all members. Any voting with opposition or in reservation seeing none, motion for doctors.
Next Governor's Message is seven sixty six. To the Board, to the Cable Advisory Committee gubernatorial nominee Scott Wong for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty four. Chair recommends we advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
The other members present with the exception of Senator Favella. With the excuse, all members present, any voting with opposition or in reservation seeing none, motions adopted.
The next Governor's Message is, I think I've got those vote sheets, Senator.
Yeah, I got the other one.
Okay.
Seven fifty, I got the seven fifty.
Okay, so Governor's Message on here, you can put that one up. Governor's Message seven sixty seven, this is to the Real Estate Commission. Gubernatorial nominee Russell Kiano for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Okay, the members present with the exclusion of Senator Favella with that. Any members voting with opposition or with reservation seeing none, motions adopted.
Thank you members. The next is Governor's Message seven sixty eight. This is also to the Real Estate Commission, John Love for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. Chair recommends we advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Yeah, the members present with the exception of Senator Favella, excuse all members, any voter with opposition or reservation seeing none, motions adopted.
Thank you members. Next Governor's Message is seven sixty nine. This is to the State Board of Public Accountancy gubernatorial nominee Gary Mioshiro for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Any excuse of Senator Favella, the six members present, are there any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you members. Governor's Message seven ninety one. This is to the East La Board. Gubernatorial nominee Benedict Lee for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
The six members present, are there any, an objection or with reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you members. Next is Governor's Message seven ninety two. This is to the Board of Speech Pathology and Audiology. Gubernatorial nominee Denby Raw for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. Recommendation of the Chair is to advising consent. Chair votes aye.
The members present, are there any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
The next Governor's Message is eight hundred. This is considering for confirmation to the Board. This is considering for confirmation to the Board of Physical Therapy. Gubernatorial nominee Michelle Chi for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty-three. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
The members present, are there any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
The next is Governor's message eight twelve. To the Board of Electricians and Plumbers, gubernatorial nominee Nathan Olanda, a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty-six. Recommendation of the Chair is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
The members present, are there any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Okay, the next is Governor's message eight thirteen. This is to the Motor Vehicle Industry Licensing Board, gubernatorial nominee John Caudell Jr. for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty-three. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Noting the, noting the excuse absence of Kirk Favella. Of all the other members present, are there any reservations or needs? Seeing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you members. The next is Governor's message eight fourteen. To the Board of Barbering and Cosmetology, gubernatorial nominee Michael Basta Jr. for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty-five. The recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
And noting the excuse absence of Senator Favella, of the six members present, are there any needs or reservations? Seeing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you members. Next is Governor's message eight thirty-four. This is to the Real Estate Commission. The nominee is Sean Ginoza, term to expire six thirty twenty twenty-six. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Noting the excuse absence of Senator Favella, are there any reservations or needs of the six members present, seeing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. The next is Governor's message eight thirty-five for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty-six. This is also to the Real Estate Commission. The nominee is Richard Emery. Chair recommends we advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Noting the excuse absence of Senator Favella, are the six members present, are there any needs or reservations? Seeing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Governor's message eight thirty-six, I believe, is our final one today. And that is to the Contractors Licensing Board, gubernatorial nominee John Polishek Jr. for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty-six. The recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair votes aye.
Noting the excuse absence of Senator Favella, are there any reservations or needs of the six members present, seeing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Madam Clerk, does that bring us to the end of our agenda? That does. Thank you members. We are adjourned. Appreciate your participation and your help.